Today is Tuesday, July 30th, 2019, and we're here for a public hearing. This is going to be conducted by myself as the vice chair because the chair is in attendance remotely and Ty Mancer is on official business away from the courthouse today. So, we may or may not take an action today. First, we have to hear about what is happening and I believe Brett is going to fill us in on today's public hearing, is that right? I guess I better make self-introductions. I'm Gary Edwards County Commissioner.
I'm Commissioner John Hutchings.
John Hutchings here and Ty is out of town and Robin Campbell.
Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager.
And Brett knows what's going on, you can tell the rest of us might not. Come on up Brett and tell us what's happening.
Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Brett Burris and I am the Building and Planning Manager for Community Planning Economic Development. Today before you is a proposal of a development agreement. So, what is Sienna Two? Sienna Two is a subdivision of 54 acres to subdivide into about 206 residential lots with associated streets, infrastructure, roads and the such. In 2007, the application came in for preliminary plat approval and that was approved in 2011. The applicants, property owners, have exhausted all avenues of plat extension and it expires on August 1st, 2019. The proposal before you is through the Revised Code of Washington or the RCWs 3670B 170 through 210 and they provide provisions of a development agreement which states that a local government may enter into a development agreement with a person having ownership or control of real property. Further, a development agreement must set forth the development standards and in this case, it's the standards include the elements to include vesting or vesting period. For development agreements, a public hearing following RCW 3670B 200 is required and it states that a county or city shall only approve a development agreement by ordinance or resolution after a public hearing. In the packet, you have two public, excuse me, submitted public testimony. One is from the City of Tumwater and the other is from the Thurston County EDC, both in support of this project. So, staff has provided you a draft ordinance as well as a draft development agreement which has been reviewed, vetted and approved as to form by our prosecuting attorney's office. With that said, I am available for any questions that you may have.
I have a question.
Go ahead Commissioner.
Number one, you said both the City of Tumwater and did you say the PUC or PDC are in support?
EDC.
Economic Development Council, I believe.
Oh, EDC, okay, thank you. And the other question I have is what kind of timeframe are we under?
The timeframe is tight, I'm not going to lie. The plat expires on August 1st, 2019, so that is two days, I believe, from now.
Brett, go ahead Commissioner.
And that's the third question, why is this running so tight?
It's running so tight because the idea or the proposal of a development agreement was facilitated between Thurston County and the property owners toward the end or nearing the expiration date. It was a conversation or more than one conversation trying to find a way to extend this preliminary plat since it's been impacted by the Mazama pocket gopher. And so, this is the, unfortunately, sorry for the tight timeline, but the course that has come to pass.
Okay Brett, thank you sir.
I would also add Commissioners that-
Robin Campbell is speaking.
Yes, thank you. That the, our planning office is currently working on an amendment to county code at the direction of the board that would be, have an extension available to all county citizens, but that has the normal process, it has to go through to the Planning Commission and public hearing and that change would not have been completed in time or at the time that this agreement expired. So, this is a special situation and hopefully by the time it comes up again, we'll have that new code in place.
And, go ahead, do you have anything else Hutch?
No, I don't Gary, thank you.
And this has something to do with the listing on the Mazama pocket gopher with US Fish and Wildlife and then we submitted an HCP about a year ago and we have just recently, in the last week or two, been notified by US Fish and Wildlife that they're not going to accept that as written and that's caused a delay as well, is that true?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You're asking me?
No, no, I'm talking to Brett. This makes it a little difficult when we're remote, you might notice. I don't know what I'd do if Ty was on the phone with us too here, it would really get confusing. Anyway, but this does make a legal meeting with two county commissioners in attendance and now I'll get into the public testimony. Thank you Brett.
Thank you.
I just want to go over the legalities to make sure that I cover everything to make this all on the up and up. The hearing topic is public hearing to receive testimony on an ordinance to enter into a development agreement between Thurston County and the proponents of the Sienna Two project. The purpose is, the purpose of the public hearing is to take public testimony on the proposed ordinance to enter into a development agreement between Thurston County and the project proponents of the Sienna Two development. This public hearing is in accordance with RCW 3670B 200. There's a sign-in sheet back there. Josh, has anybody else signed in? Okay, so now I have the sign-in sheet and a few of the rules of the road, if you will. You will have three minutes to testify, I will be calling out names for oral testimony. When you hear your name, please come forward to testify and the time may not be given to another person although depending on, on time, we could, if you're in the middle of the thought, we're not going to cut you off just because the three minute bell rings. This is an open public hearing and for those of you, if you would state your name and address for the record when you do come up to testify. So, the first person up is Ron Dearing. Ron, are you going to come up and fill us in here?
Hello Commissioners, thank you very much for doing this at the late date, we really appreciate it. This development has some unique things that I think give some real public benefit to keep the vesting going. First of all, it's in the UGA, it's where development's meant to be. The development would bring a sewer lift station to the area, it'd be a regional lift station, so it would open up potentially other lands in the area to be developed within the UGA. It also would give the opportunity of potentially people that are on septic or community drain fields to hook up to septic and, or to hook up to sewer and, and not have the septic. Also on the water, we'd be bringing Tumwater City Water to the area which in time might take a well or two away as they'd hook up to city water which again would be, I think, good for the environment. Stormwater, again, it was approved under the Salmon Creek Guidelines which are very, or Salmon Creek Basin Guidelines which are very stringent, I think as stringent honestly is what current Department of Ecology book says that they are. So, I don't see a downside at all to doing an extension. It also from a safety standpoint, the entrance would be right across from the entrance to Black Hills High School and at this point, there is a stoplight there, but it doesn't have a left turn lane and this would put in a new traffic signal with left turn lanes going both into the school and into the development. So, I think from a safety standpoint for faculty and students, I think that's a good thing. So, I really don't, I don't see a downside to it and would appreciate your consideration for this and if you have any question, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you sir. And I might point out during these public hearings, it's really not our position, we're here to listen, we're probably not going to carry on a dialogue because it's your time to address the county commission, so it'll kind of be a one-way street here. So, Jim, could you introduce yourself?
Yes, good afternoon Commissioner, my name is Jim Einott. I'm the manager of Bobby Jones LLC, the applicant and owner of the property Sienna Two and I first want to express to the Commissioner and staff my appreciation for the cooperation and facility of how they got this matter on the, on the agenda and I want to, and I appreciate that. This is a tremendously important project for Bobby Jones and we think it also benefits the public and the community in a way that's beneficial now and in the future. It's been stated that the plat was originally submitted in 2007, preliminary plat approval was obtained in 2011. Mr. Deering was the developer of Sienna One and Sienna Two. It was planned all along that Sienna One would be permitted first and the improvements would be made from Sienna One and ultimately benefit Sienna Two. And in 2016, Mr. Deering's Sienna One project was stopped by the mighty gopher and because of that, we've had complex development issues with our project and one of which was that the road to Sienna Two crosses Sienna One. And we were, I became involved in this project in late 2017 and got it under contract in December of 2017. Our plan was to finish construction approval by June of 2018 and start construction that summer and to be finished by today. We worked with SCJ Alliance in that regard, they told us that was realistic and certainly something that they expected to get approved at that point. However, in the spring of 2018, an internal debate started within the planning department and the debate was, what do we do? This plat was prior to the gopher review issues, but we're using property across Sienna One, how do they handle it? And to a certain extent, we got locked in a box with our handcuffs with no way of escape. There was no real remedy for us, we proposed and we floated a number of ideas that staff was really, what they felt is unable or unwilling to agree to. So, we tried to work out of that box and we worked with Mike Kane through several meetings with the staff, et cetera, to try to figure out a remedy. What ultimately happened was that Mike Kane-
Keep going sir.
That was a fast three minutes.
That's right. Please stick with it.
Thank you very much Commissioner. Mike Kane walked the property in October, on October 5th, 2018 and at that point, he made two decisions. One was there was no gopher activity across the road on Sienna One and that there was no activity, gopher activity on Sienna Two as well. And as a result, we then were able, the county then said, we will now start processing your plat. So, really from March of 2018 until October, there was nothing we could do to get our plat approved or work through what we thought were final changes ready to be confirmed in June of 2018. And to Commissioner Hutchings' comment, that's a huge part of why we're here so late. Believe me, we don't want to be, we want it to be done and, and we felt we were frustrated in our process, but getting approved in December of 2018 didn't solve our problem because we still need the city approval. We are extending the sewer beyond the property, we're extending water to the city of Tumwater. That approval didn't come till late March of 2019 and despite our best efforts, really the approval became too late to put together the mobilizing equipment, finally, finalizing all the construction approval and moving forward, everyone kept telling us there isn't much- Everyone kept telling us there isn't much they can do by August 1st at that point. So today, we're here for approval of the development agreement to allow the improvements to be constructed. You know, and it's our position that the county benefits because now if the development agreement gets approved, we have to get them done, completed, inspected, and then we can apply for a final plat. So with the development agreement, we have a contract with the county that they control the inspections and the way that it'll be constructed before they have to give us a final plat. So we think that that's a benefit to the county rather than bonding work that's not done. We think that it's going to be beneficial to get the normal process back into play, and this development agreement does that. Mr. Deering has mentioned the improvements to the traffic light, there are turn lanes, we think it adds safety to the students, we think that it's helpful for the rest of the community that goes there, and we also think it's going to help the traffic during the peak times of coming and going through the high school. He's hit on, Mr. Deering also hit on the lift station, we think that's a benefit, and it'll benefit not only our plat but adjacent properties and future development. And then, of course, with the water extension, we think the same thing is true as well. This property is the culmination of 12 years of work, planning, and financial commitment. Thousands of hours have been committed to the project, hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent. We ask for your approval of the development agreements, the work can be completed, the property can become viable, a viable asset for the county and the city, and I want to thank you for your time and attention on this matter.
Thank you, sir. Aaron Hall.
Good afternoon, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Erin Hall, I'm here on behalf of Olympia Master Builders. The mission of Olympia Master Builders is to promote housing affordability and attainability in Thurston County. You've heard a little bit this afternoon about the very specific ways that this project would benefit the community in its immediate locale. I'd like to speak a little bit about how this project will benefit the state of housing in Thurston County overall. As I'm sure you're aware, Thurston Regional Planning Council data shows us that over the last decade, Thurston County has underproduced housing units by between 200 and 600 a year. That's every year for the last decade. We have a significant housing gap, there's way too much demand in our county and not enough supply, and as a result, we see prices going up and folks having a harder and harder time finding a place to live. The 200-plus homes that this project will bring will significantly ease that burden and be a significant step to narrowing the gap that we've accrued over this period. And I think a little bit more interestingly than that for me is the price point that these houses are scheduled to come out into the market. As I'm sure you're aware, the prices in Thurston County have been going up pretty exponentially over the last two years in particular. These houses are slated to come online in the mid-300s, and if you ask any real estate agent in town, they will tell you that they probably will not stay on the market very long at all. Houses in those price points go really quickly, and more importantly than that, they serve a really necessary mid-market population. Your first-level entry professionals, these will be your teachers, your firefighters, your cops, the folks who live and protect and serve Thurston County, who also want to live here and make it a good place for their home. Now, as you've heard today, there have been a lot of work on this project in the background. We are working with staff and planning to come up with a long-term code solution so we don't have to come visit you again like this at the 11th hour. However, because of the way timing played out, we are under a ticking clock for this. So it does merit your consideration, not just for the specific benefits that you're going to see in the neighborhoods surrounding Sienna 2, but the significant ease on the burden of the housing crisis that we have in Thurston County. Thank you for your consideration for this, and as you go forward in your work today, please consider the ramifications for all citizens and the benefit that you will see in terms of being able to provide about 200 additional homes for people to live in and make Thurston County their home. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor.
[inaudible]
Yeah. Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Hutchings on the phone. My name is Heather Burgess, for the record, with Phillips Burgess, PLLC, 724 Columbia Street, Suite 320, Olympia, Washington, 98501, I hope? I say that enough, you'd think I'd know off the top of my head. In any event, I'm counsel of record for Bobby Jones LLC, the current owners of this property. You've heard all of the detail, both from Mr. Deering and Mr. Einott regarding the somewhat challenging development history for this particular parcel, and I just wanted to speak specifically to the kind of 11th-hour nature of what's before you today. Your staff, Director Cummings, Mr. Burris, counsel, have really worked hard to find any other possible alternative to find a way to resolve this in light of the fact that the code amendments were not going to be completed and resolved that are under consideration, which would potentially assist this project. And after really doing an exhaustive review of basically all the RCWs plus all of your Thurston County codes concluded that this was really the only viable and reasonable legal alternative, there is precedent for similar action in Thurston County in that in 2012, the Commissioners approved a development agreement addressing some vesting issues for stormwater for the Kaufman family for a project that was also in the Tumwater urban growth area. So although not as prevalent as in other jurisdictions, some jurisdictions, including counties, do dozens of these per year, Thurston County is not one of them, but it certainly isn't unprecedented and it's well within your legal and statutory authority. I think it is important that the City of Tumwater has come on board and expressed their support for the extension. Like the county, the city was significantly impacted by the listing of the Mazama pocket gopher, and let's just say the challenging circumstances that result from that when trying to secure permits or approvals from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And they, too, have really gone out of their way when it was appropriate to ensure that property owners who were impacted by the listing did not unnecessarily bear the burdens of that for the benefits of the greater environmental protection that the Endangered Species Act affords. So again, I appreciate strongly, want to express my appreciation and thanks for the hard work of your staff on this issue, not that they don't work hard on everything, but for them to be so rapid and responsive was consistent, frankly, with what you'd expect in the private sector, and in my view, that's a good scorecard. So really appreciate all of their hard work. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. John Pettit.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit, I live at 9725 Rich Road, Southeast Olympia. Having done some development myself before, and observing and being part of the real estate area, a salesperson, a broker, I can only tell you for absolute sure that the process to actually try and process and develop property is extensively difficult. And obviously, interesting enough, I work on some projects even that Mr. Deering had worked on clear back in about 1990, so it's right next to some property I'm developing right now, so. But I guess what I'm just going to touch base on, I cannot imagine in any way, shape, or form that you'd want to eliminate this possibility of having a development and more lots available for the community and for the county so we can move forward and provide housing. It was stated before, affordable housing. Affordable housing doesn't happen when you get a shortage of it. Okay, so therefore, every time you don't create more at this point with a growing area, you are creating shortages that naturally occur. So rather than just say, yes, I would like to encourage the Commissioners to take an action, I'm going to do one extra little part here, which is to say this. It's unfortunate that the timeframe is last minute, but this is not something that can go over to another week to make a decision. This is something that has to be decided today. It has to be approved today. So this can stay in its fullness and work within the boundaries. So I strongly would support the extension. People invest a lot of money in order to try to create exactly what the county needs. So I would encourage you as Commissioners to set forth a motion, accept it, move this forward, and approve it today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any other citizens or staff that have come to testify today on this topic? Seeing none, I guess I want to take this one step farther as a prerogative of the chair, I guess. Having had discussions with U.S. Fish and Wildlife as far back as 2013, I was assured as a businessperson in this community that the Endangered Species Act and the listing of the Mazama pocket gopher was not going to be detrimental to the urban growth area, the municipalities, schools, or agriculture. And I'm sorry to say that that didn't pan out that way when it was all said and done, because if you think about our Washington Growth Management Act, it really promotes growth in the urban core and discourages growth in rural America. Some folks have taken that to the extreme and at both ends of the spectrum, but the reality is, that was the intent of it. And by listing this Mazama pocket gopher and not giving exemptions like they said they were going to give exemptions, caused the problem that we're having here today, which is just very unfortunate that they didn't stick with their management that talked about this back in 2013. Now, the leadership locally has changed hands, I believe, three times now, and maybe that's the reason. I'm not here to beat up on U.S. Fish and Wildlife, we want to work with them. We did our best to submit a HCP last year, they had it for a full year, and they just got back to us and said, well, that's not quite going to fit. So through their own action is one of the reasons that we're here today doing this. And if you think about affordable housing, oftentimes, government regulation is about 25% of that process. And if we were not to take this action, it would probably increase that percentage because somebody has to go through all the hoops again. And that's kind of unfortunate, and in my estimation, having heard everything that I've heard today, seems a bit unnecessary. But with that being said, we're going to move ahead, and without any further public comment, I'm going to close this public hearing, and then the Commissioners may or may not take an action, and we will discuss that. And before I close the hearing, to our Assistant County Manager, are there any technicalities that I may have missed? Because I don't want to be in a situation that, well, I forgot to say this or that, that puts us in a bind on this issue.
So I do believe there needs to be a motion to close the public hearing.
Let me know when you're ready for that motion.
Okay. Commissioner, I'm ready for a motion to close this public hearing, if you so desire.
I move to close the public hearing.
And I'll second that motion. Any further discussion on that?
No.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This public hearing is now closed. Okay.
And I have a second motion when you're ready, sir.
I am ready, sir.
I move to adopt an ordinance to authorize the chair or designee to enter into a development agreement between Thurston County and the property owner of the Sienna 2 preliminary plat, project number 200710348, to extend the duration of approval to January 1, 2021.
And I'll second that, sir. Any further discussion on-
No.
On this motion, okay.
No, sir.
All those in favor of the motion just read by Commissioner Hutchings?
Aye.
So it's my understanding that that motion passes, and we will be adopting an ordinance dated today that reflects that.
Yes.
Do you have anything else to add to this particular public hearing, ma'am?
No, not at this time. I believe that we need to close the meeting.
I'm looking towards a nod to our counselor, if he thinks that's about right. Okay. With no further action to come before this board, I would entertain a motion to close this public meeting.
I move to close the public meeting.
And I second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and thank you to the community for attending. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you all.